Like to call to order the Cooper County Planning Commission, um, October, November meeting. And we, um, welcome everyone here this evening, um, who are joining us, um, this evening. And, um, the first order of business that we have is approval of the agenda.
So move.
So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Okay, agenda's approved, approval of the minutes of October 8th, 2025 meeting.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. And, uh, we don't have to go any further with that. Now swiftly, we move into our new business. Neil?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have case U 2256 25 dash one. It's a request by Rob and Rosemary Edwards of Autumn Valley Farm for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an agritourism event facility per Article 3, Section 3, 2, dash 2.1B. And this is agritour- agritourism in the instance where substantial impact on health, safety, or general welfare of the public may be realized. Also, Section 3, dash 2, dash 2.4 banquet facilities and in general accordance with Article 17, conditional use permits of zoning ordinance. The property's owned RA and is like rural area and is located along Store Road Route 1145 in the Salem Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map 49, Parcels 21, 21D, and 21D2. And Pam has the board, uh, the map there up on the board for you. If you'll just bear with me, I'll give you a brief synopsis. Uh, the subject parcel's there in red, highlighted in red. Um, to, this is all residential zoning. Uh, Store Road that I mentioned is the main access point coming into the property. This, there's a road that exits over into this neighborhood, which is Monitor Drive, that the applicant proposes on the larger events to have one-way traffic. Um, and let me just back up. The impetus, uh, for this is largely to bring what is existing as a barn or banquet facility into code compliance with the building official. Um, the applicant received a violation from the building official, and in order to get a zoning permit, I have to categorize this structure as, as, as a banquet facility. That, that's that one component. Um, the agritourism part, as you well aware, um, from last month and maybe some future cases, is that some agritourism is definitely principle permitted or by right. Staff feels that in some cases, due to the frequency or the nighttime use of lights or music, um, loudspeakers, that this could have a substantial impact on the immediate neighborhood. Um, there, there's a line there that, that we need to parse out and, and think about when we're, when we're looking at this. There's an ongoing corn maze and some things that are bona fide agriculture that we can't restrict, but on, on the impact side, you know, that, that's appropriate. Store Road has 160 vehicles and fairly low volume. Uh, there is a drain field associated with this. The applicant, you can go forward Pam, the applicant proposes, uh, to use portageons on the bigger events. Um, yeah, and then the area there along the R1, excuse me, there's some parking here that's proposed in this concept plan. And I'll let the applicant who is present, you know, speak to the, the details of the site a little more. The larger events are of concern, but let me just read, uh, the staff recommendations if you decide to approve this, and then I'll stop there and take any questions. Number one, condition number one, the venue entrances at Store and Monitor Road shall be upgraded to meet VDOT standards for a moderate volume commercial entrance. Number one's based on VDOT recommendations. Number two, noise decibel levels for amplified music or loudspeakers shall not exceed 65 decibels at the property lines of the subject parcel, and that's the nighttime maximum, 65 decibels for the district. Number three, any use of temporary portageons facilities shall be in accordance with Virginia Department of Health requirements and provided by licensed carriers or sewage handlers. Number four, food services that are provided onsite shall be permitted to the Virginia Department of Health. Number five, any site lighting shall be in conformance with Appendix A, Article 32 of outdoor lighting standards. And the reason that's in there is agriculture is exempt from, from lighting often. Number six, the barn as permitted, as a permitted banquet facility, and this is important, shall be allowed to host a licensed Virginia farm winery off-site tasting room in accordance with Virginia ABC Alcoholic Beverage Control Regulations. And this is proposed by the applicant. It would set a precedent that staff does support. It, it seems to be appropriate for banquet facilities. Um, there are no grapes grown on the property, so they don't enjoy the winery status, but they would like to host a, a vineyard. And apologies, number seven, and, and the last one, any intermittent stream channel, pond, or wetland on the property shall provide a non-disturbed vegetative buffer of 35 feet as measured from the top of stream bank or edge of water. Um, and with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll take, I'll entertain any questions that you all may have concerning the case. Yes, sir.
Um, is the applicant a representative for the applicant, uh, just come forth and give your full name for the record?
Hey, Rob Edwards, 95, 21 Store Road.
Okay. Have anything that you'd like to add, or?
Hmm.
We just give you that opportunity at this time to?
Yeah, he did a good job summarizing it. So I really just had, if you have any questions with me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? We can do that at this time. No, Neil, go ahead.
Do you want to do your presentation? We have the presentation.
Oh. With the pictures?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we could do.
See, we do magic here.
I don't do this every day, guys.
We do magic here, right? Okay, go ahead.
Um, so I guess I put some pictures together, maybe to give you a feel. I don't know if any of y'all have been out to the maze or anywhere else, anything else we've done, but I just wanted to share some pictures of the farm and kind of what we're doing. This is the entrance. Um, actually, the gatehouse was modeled after a spring house in, uh, Washington DC on Rock Creek Park that I drive by every day. So I took a picture of it and decided I want one like it, so I built that. That's what you're looking at there. And the barn is behind it. Uh, this is our corn maze. We're still actually running it. We were going to finish this last weekend, but we've had some pretty good success, so I got one more weekend in me. I know the wife is a little tired of it, but, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna go one more weekend here. Um, yep, that's a, that's the maze behind it. It's eight acres. Uh, we had a good show. It's our first year, hopefully many more to come. We've had a lot of folks come out from the community. They, they all love it. Some, some of the husbands come in angry and anxious and when they leave, they get interrupted at 4:00 in the afternoon from the football game, and they come out happy, so that's cool. But that's pretty much the 30 acres, roughly. Um, and I'm going to rotate that corn maze throughout. In that area, I might even have to move it across. I have 20 acres across. I might have to move it there if we're having issues with crops. We still, we still farm it, so it's kind of a blend of agriculture and entertainment. And I'm not sure exactly how it's going to play for the next two or three years. We're going to give it a shot. Yeah, that's a wild scavenger hunt we set up for the kids. That was a big hit. So we put different birds that we have on the farm that we see, put them throughout the maze, and the kids try to match their feet with the bird, and it works pretty good. I've got a lot of coyote problems, um, so I'm going to try, instead of blasting them, we'll try to catch them at the food source. So we've had kids from schools come out and make them birdhouses, and it's, it's really that house there is designed to catch the barn owls. And so I'm hopefully deploy about 100, 150 of them. I have a neighbor that was suggesting attracting a different bird. Um, trying to remember the name of the bird, but, um, I'm going to try, I'm going to try a combination of things to try to, I mean, if coyotes want to go to your house and eat your cats and hang out with you guys, that's fine. I just had too many losses in the last year, so I'm going to try to take the food source and move them on. Um, this is representative, we're going to be using the barn to do indoor activities, and this is just an example of like one of them, little mazes, different things. I was thinking about doing something for this Christmas, uh, with nativity scenes, but I got to get caught up. Uh, this was a, um, just some local folks that came over for a, um, I don't know, promote their own business kind of thing. That's Duquard. Uh, I, I ran into them last year, first-class outfit, loved, loved everything about Duquard, and I invited Scott over. He looked at my place and said, "We need to get married. We got to do something here." And so, um, he's very mature in his, um, business model, and I'm very new, and it kind of works for us, and I do not want to be a winery at all. Um, yep, we had a wedding. That worked out great. Is that it? Wow, cool. Oh, no, that's not it. Um, yeah, so actually, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm putting in, um, another set of gardens up by the barn, um, and I have to talk to the wife a little bit more about that because she doesn't know all the details, but, um, we're working on it now.
And we noticed you was, had to get authorization.
Yeah.
Whether you should go there or not, you know?
Yeah, I'll fill her in tonight for, that's, uh, that's it, guys. I don't really have anything else, but welcome to my farm. I bought it in 2003. Honestly, didn't know what I was going to do with it in the beginning because I, it was so beautiful, and I didn't even walk it. I just saw it, and I said, "When I get back from Florida in three months, if it's still there, I'm selling all my land in Loudoun County, and I'm going to buy it." And that's exactly what happened. I came down, it was still on the market, it had been sitting, and, um, I called my agent and I said, "You got 30 days to get to me in closing." So she did, and I did a tax exchange, and I bought it, and I'm glad I did it, and it's, it's been a beautiful piece of property. We had a lot of folks out, they really enjoy it, so I've had a lot of friends get married there. No complaints, but, uh, they've had some parties on the farm. So, yeah, that's about it.
Okay, good job. Now, if we have any questions for the applicant, we, uh, just raise your hand and?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of things. Sir, thanks for your presentation. Uh, so you're already holding events there, weddings and other things like that? So the, the, the packet that we had, had the various types of things that I guess that you would be looked to doing in the future, so how much of what, um, you're looking at doing is an increase over what you're doing right now?
I mean, I, I, I guess you can always increase it, but there's only so many weekends a year. There's only so many times during the year, um, you can do certain things. I can only grow things during, during certain times of the year. So, I, I mean, I am trying to well-round it throughout the year. Um, so to answer your question, like, so for instance, um, the programs for kids, that can be more year-round.
Yeah.
We can do that in a barn. Christmas comes around once a year, I'm going to have some lights, people can come in a little loop, they can hang out, go to the barn. If the weather's favorable, they can be outside. It just depends on what Mother Nature gives me and what we're doing. But if you're talking about general impact, um, it just depends on which one you're talking about.
Well, if, if the CUP is approved, you won't necessarily increase the number of events over what you're doing currently. That is, you won't have more events, you won't have more people out there, you won't have more cars on those roads, or is it your intention to expand what you're doing?
Yeah, exactly. And I, well, we're getting ahead of it, because to Neil's point, when we spoke four years ago about doing all this, and then coming forward to this year, and how the county's changed and things have changed. For me, um, if I can get more folks to corn mazes and we can do other events throughout the year, then I would like to think that we would get more people to come. I mean, that's the whole purpose of it, right? The, uh, the idea of, of, um, like traffic, for instance, I happen to be fortunate enough to have a second entrance.
Mm-hmm.
So if we ever, just out of consideration by neighbors, I suggested that I open up if we get over a certain amount. I'm not a engineer, so I didn't engineer it, but I can kind of feel, you know? It's like if we have more than one or two cars run up and down Store Road today in an hour or in a minute, then that's a little bit more than we normally have. So I can open up the back door and send people one way, and that's kind of what I like to do. I do not want to sit there and start maintaining, like, bringing all these roads up to state, but these are all gravel driveways. This is what I drive on every day. Um, so I don't want to spend that kind of money, nor I don't think my neighbors would like to have, like, highways through the, the farm. I already have enough cut-through problems as it is. I got to put gates up. Folks on monitor side cut through the farm at 2:00 AM, and I've, I've had other issues, so I have to sort of protect the farm, but I have gates and I can regulate that, and I can open them when I need to. Um, that, that's about it.
But, but you're already having a certain number of events to include large-scale events there now successfully, and working that out with your neighbors, and so with the CUP approval, if you get it, you will all of a sudden ramp that up significantly and then have twice as many events next year, or three times as many people out there next year, right? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out if this is going to lead to a greater impact on the neighbors than what you've already, what you're already doing.
I'm sure it will. I mean, I'm sure there'll be more people as we grow, okay? Every event cycle does. So, um, we just started advertising for the corn maze five, six weeks ago. Um, we noticed each week we had more folks come to that. Um, but like, let's use an example, like when the schools come. School buses range from anywhere from 20 to 50, right? So they're usually during the day. I don't know any neighbors that are home during the day, but I suspect they might see a school bus go by. Um, if you take a wedding, that's the most popular thing out there for some places. A wedding has maybe 50 to 70 cars. It doesn't really change, it's just what it is.
Yeah, but, but you're projecting room for up to 400 cars?
It could be. I mean, 400 cars, I mean, we're trying to figure out, I had a, I had a wedding that had 72 cars, and that maxed out the building pretty much, and that included all the vendors. So that was everybody that came in. I don't know, I, I don't expect to have a wedding that's going to have 300 or 400 people. As a matter of fact, we wouldn't have that in the building because it's too small. You just couldn't fit them in there. So I think your, you know, your typical, like, birthday parties have ranged from anywhere from eight to, eight to 15 cars. So we've had birthdays.
Yeah.
And we've had different events, the corn maze, we had maybe 15 cars max at one moment there, and that, but it fluctuated over the 12 hours of the day. So maybe in the day, we had 30 or 40.
Do you ever use amplified music outside the barn, or is it all inside the barn?
No, I've used it outside, but we, we keep it cool. We had it last weekend, um, but, you know, I have neighbors, so we don't sit there and blast on it. It's more for background.
Yeah, I noticed you had some signatures on petitions of neighbors who were very supportive, but Jan Court is actually closer to the barn than the folks over on, uh, Monitor and Hampton, and there was nobody from Jan Court that indicated they were supportive. So have you ever had any complaints about noise or traffic from the folks over on South Merrimack or Jan Court? And I would also ask the staff, if you've ever gotten any complaints from anybody out there over traffic or noise?
Mr. Price, no, I have not gotten any formal complaints in the zoning department to date.
Okay.
If you want him to make any comments, just have him give his full name for the?
My name is Naty Vida Medina, and if you have that map of, uh, his barn again, my house is right on the corner of Jan Court, just a little bit, the very first house on the right up there. That's where I live. And I moved here in 2000, and maybe because of 30 years of service of the Marine Corps, my hearing's not that great, but I don't hear that much noise coming from the barn. Further up the road where the agricultural place is at, I hear events all the time. And the last one I remember was when they had that big, uh, truck, shh, uh, whatever it was here. We heard that well until the night, close to the midnight. So as far as what's going on in the barn, I don't hear much of it, and I haven't really heard too many complaints. People have concerns that something might get loud, but it hasn't yet. As far as traffic going on there, whoever comes onto the farm from, from Merrimack comes right past my house, and, uh, other than hearing the gravel, that's, that's basically what it is. So it's not a, not, for me, it's not a concern.
Okay.
All right, and sir, and just a couple of other things for the applicant, if I could. So you indicated that you would try not to have overlapping events, so is that still the case?
You can have your seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, um, well, I mean, I just had one, um, overlap last week because we had corn maze going on, and then they had, uh, the kids that wanted to do a bird program.
Yeah.
So we, we manage it, we just deal with it when it comes. I'll have another one, I have a prayer breakfast coming Saturday, um, and we have corn maze. So there will overlap, but you're not talking about, you know, 7,000 kids coming for a prayer breakfast.
Okay. Um, just one final thing about parking. So on your concept, concept sketch, you've got a row of parking up there next to the barn and indicates 150 spaces, but in the narrative it mentions there'll be Lot A, 75 cars on gravel, and overflow on Lot B with 325 cars on grass. Can you describe about where those are in relation to the barn and where the, the parking is indicated on the concept plan?
Sure. So there was one photograph that showed kind of the barn with some vehicles in it on gravel, and that one. Now, now that one is, that's 75 cars there roughly, and I can't get anything to grow on that tree line that goes all the way back. You just keep extending all the way to 29, and it's really flat, and it, and the soles are really, really tight in there. So whether it's wet, it doesn't matter. If it rained, you can drive on it, it's not going to sink. That's my best place for cars. And what I do is, depending on the event, I might have to cut it, and that's what I had to do before, I had to cut more of it in, but it was mainly Johnson grass and junk I can't, I can't grow, I can't get anything, and deer come in, eat anything I put. So that's the best place for parking. I can expand it, I can go all the way, I, I can go as far as that one picture showed, and I can actually come in towards the maze if I needed to go up to 300, 400 people, but guys, I, I'd be hard-pressed to see that many coming, and if they did, there's other ways to regulate them. I can regulate them with hours and, you know, so many per whatever. I, this isn't that place, it's not that, it's not that commercialized. Um, but if I need to expand the parking, I think I heard somebody worried about parking going all the way out to Jan Court and up the court. I, I don't know where that came from, but my wife and I maintain that right-of-way and, or that roadway coming in, because we have flowers we've been planting for the last 10 years in there and things going on.
Okay.
I wrote along people parking on that.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman, I'm good. I'm good, thanks, sir.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Let me see. Mr. O'Neil?
So I'm, I'm most concerned about noise, and some of the, uh, language in here says that amplified music will stop at 10:45, and the vent will end at 11:00, and I think those details make me wonder, uh, the county noise ordinance, as far as I know, is 10 o'clock cutoff, unless that has changed. So that needs to be corrected in here. It's not going to be at 10:45, there's still amplified music, so.
Inside or outside? I'm sorry, does it matter? Because if it's inside, you can't even hear it from the outside.
Well, it doesn't clarify here if it's in or out, or it doesn't say in or out. And then it's got, uh, a lot more detail that I'm just noise worried about. You know, if you have it there, I think that's fine, but this party barn atmosphere can create a lot of noise, and there's, like you said, plenty of houses around there. So I'm just, um, concerned how you can mitigate some of the projected noise opportunities, so.
Sure. Well, when there was a wedding there, it had, uh, about 110 firefighters. Um, I, I stopped at, I was coming back from Charlottesville around 8:30 at night, and I, I stopped on three places on Hampton Lane and three places on Jan Court, and I couldn't hear anything from there. And then when I came in my, my side, I stopped twice, and I guess it surprised me, I was right at the property line, and all I heard was five kids, little kids under 15 giggling. And I was like, this is, I thought, I thought they shut them. I didn't think that, I thought they shut it down early. So I went up to the top, no, they were cranking inside, they were, had their thing going on, but all I could hear outside were the kids. So it doesn't mean it's always like that, but you're asking me what we've experienced, and that's what we've experienced, so, um, there's no amplified music at night.
Outside.
Yeah, now, now, I, we have had amplified music last weekend with amplified music until about 7:30 that evening.
Outside?
Outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it doesn't even meet, it doesn't even get to the property line, because we don't like amplify and blow it out. It's more just amplified for the corn maze itself and for around the barn.
Right.
But it's not projected to go entertain the neighbors.
Right, but I'm just saying, if you get an approval and it doesn't have that kind of detail in it, I'm just letting you know that ordinance is 10 o'clock, noise ordinance, okay? And that it does exist.
Yeah, we don't, oh, of course.
Okay. All right, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay.
I just had a, a couple of follow-up questions to, along the lines of what Keith was asking. How many, and I was just trying to clarify, how many events did you have, like, say, over the last year, would you say? At your facility?
Depends on when, if, if the corn maze is an event, and that's one event, then there's one, I've probably had about six.
About six for the year? And you're projecting 80?
Well, I mean, depends how you look at the corn maze. Is the corn maze just one event, or is it 21 event cycles that we've already had? Because we had 21 in the last 30 days, so we've had 20, you know, we've had, or 45 days. So we've had 21 event cycles in the last 45 days that's been outdoors at night with music, with light and all that. And have we gotten a zone? No, we didn't, no complaints. We, we try to regulate ourself, you know? Like I said, we're in an area that's not, we don't make the kind of, we don't generate the kind of noise, and we'll never generate the kind of noise that the agricultural enterprise does. That one's the one that wakes you up at 12 o'clock at night because they're having their land grand finale, and we all know it. Um, I have some neighbors that like to hire DJ and play. I actually got mistaken for that last month. They thought it was me, and it wasn't me. It was a neighbor that was another half a mile away that borders my property, and it sounded like it was us, and when we all figured out who it was, we don't care, but I'm just saying that's how it works, right? So like, I'll get blamed for something even if we're not open. I've had some of that, and it's okay.
Was the, is the 150 spaces that are shown here, is that, is that going to be gravel?
No, I don't want it gravel, because we're probably not going to really use it that much.
It's just going to be grass?
If I need it, I can cut, yeah. The, the ground is really hard up there, so it's really ideal for parking.
Okay. Um, was there, was there, I know, I think, I think Neil, you mentioned it was about a potential wetlands and things of that nature. Was there any environmental study or anything like that done? Perennial stream evaluation onsite, ephemeral streams, anything like that that, that has been looked at from a engineering perspective?
No, there, there's a drawl up there that I used to keep maintained, and I never let vegetation grow in it. I'm considering tearing it all out, because the problem I have there is that the birds like to hang out in there and they destroy all my crops, and so it's one of the, one of the, I'm on the fence about it, because I kind of like it. I like it grown up, but it's actually presenting a challenge, and I think John can attest. He farms it with me. Um, the, the birds sit up in there, and then they come on down, and they blast away at everything I grow, and it's one of the challenges we have. The best part about having a buffer is you got a buffer. The worst part about it is that's where the birds like to hang out, the deer, the kind, everything hangs out in there, and it comes into my fields at night, it eats, it eats, it eats, and then we're not left with what we should be left with, so.
Okay. And then you mentioned, um, the wedding that you had. Um, you said there was about 75 cars, or, uh, how, what's the barn capacity?
With the vendors.
What was the barn capacity again?
There's, there is a barn capacity at 299, but the realistic capacity on the main level is about 145 to 165.
Okay.
If you get tighter than that, it just becomes uncomfortable, and frankly, I don't really see, I'm not really in the mood to be hosting, like, I'm not, my wife's Spanish, we know what consignors are about, we don't need 300 people coming and raising hell. That's not what we're here. Does it mean that I will never have a consignor? No, because I know that there's people that know how to conduct themselves and be reasonable. But I also know that I've been to many consignors, and they get pretty rowdy at about 9:30, 10: and those are the spillovers you got to worry about. And I'm not, I'm not advertising for it, I'm not want it, I've already turned a bunch of them down. I prefer them to go to Reeve Fire Department for that, but I don't think they want to do them there. So I'm just kind of stuck, you know? It's like, I do my thing. I let them do their thing and that's it. So...
But you would, you or someone else would be there when the events are happening?
We're always there. My wife and I live on the farm. We're always there.
Something did get out of hand. You can handle that.
I got first ears on everything.
Thank you.
Sir, a couple more questions. In your proposal here, you talk about, we plan to build another house with the intention of supporting our own wedding venue. So you're planning to build something other than the barn that's there?
Maybe, I asked Neil, like, when I do this, does it negate my ability to build a house on there? And he said, no. Because I didn't know. I thought if you do this and you can't build houses on it. I like the opportunity to do it. And then the deal is, what I heard is, if I want something in the future, you have to ask for it now, even if you don't know if you want to do it. So ask for it now, otherwise you have to come back and do the whole process. So I put stuff in there that I may never do. But that house, I doubt we'll do one on that. I wanted to know I could if I wanted to have like a little small guest house or something. But on my farm, I have other properties and I might want to build another house on that. I have a house I built originally when I bought the farm. I built it in two thousand and three. And I lived there and then I built a second house on the farm. And that's the one we've been in since. The thing is...
But, but you're talking about a residential facility, not, not another venue?
No, I don't want to do another venue. Just a house.
Okay. Okay.
Because we host a lot. So I have an Airbnb in, in the woods. And we support all the weddings in this area. These families come. We just did Mountain Run Winery last weekend. The family that had a wedding there was in my house. We, this, I have a house that's just a magnet for families that want, they, there's not a good place to find a six-bedroom house that you can have multi-generation. They get grandma, grandpa, mom, dad, the kids, and they all come to my house. And it's been, it's been a hit. I might do it again because we just don't have enough capacity.
Okay. You talked about the projected number of events and how many you had by last year. Okay, so in, in your, in your presentation here, it says that you've got occasional private party. You're talking about up to eighty a year and special events and other forty-fives. That's a hundred and twenty-five events. So that's like an event every three days.
Right.
How does that compare to what you've done last year?
Oh, it's, it's more. And, and it's one of those, again, if you don't ask, then you have to go through the whole process again. I don't want to do this again. I didn't even want to do it this time. But I'm doing it for the team and I think you guys, I think it makes sense. I've seen a lot of growth, people coming into this area. I've had challenges with encroachment and other things. And I can just see the future coming at me. I can see more folks from Northern Virginia, Maryland, Annapolis, New Jersey, buying right around me. And then wanting to improve their views, wanting to come over into my property. I don't mind them coming in. I invite a lot of my neighbors to walk their dogs and do other things. But not cut my fences and my trees and do all those things. And that's happening more and more and more. And I, I see the future. So if I get ahead of this now and I cement myself in the, the ability to use my farm the way I like to, then at least it gives me some control. Because right now I feel like I don't always have control. I feel like my neighbors have control. So I like to have a little control. That's all I want.
Okay. Ms. Thornhill brought up a concern about the times. You also say you're going to, you want to, activities can start at seven AM. That seems awfully early.
Yeah, I don't know. Those are more for the kids. If kids with school buses want to come over and do something, but I don't know. Kids don't get up that early. So it might be more like eight or nine.
I mean, I would definitely have to ask you to modify these times before we did anything.
That's fine. I think what I, Neil, I think I was trying to follow the zoning rules too, like the hours. And I don't know if I did a good enough job. I mean, maybe I, maybe I didn't. I don't, I don't know what the, when you can start. Like in construction, we can start at seven AM to see a false church. But that's different than Fairfax. So I put down hours that are consistent with what the rules are. But it's not that I want to start at seven AM. If I did, I suspect most of my neighbors are already off to work.
Yeah. Neil has the guidance for that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have zoning ordinance for, you know, activities to start. You're right about construction. And, and Ms. Thornhill is correct about the, you know, the nuisance ordinance, you know, starting at ten for nighttime hours. But I don't have specific times that you could start your air tourism event.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, yeah. There. How about that? I'm sorry.
Guys, no problem.
Okay, uh, let's see.
Thanks, Neil.
Again, concern is, is also traffic. We talked about Store Road today. It's, it's rated for a hundred and sixty vehicles a day. Your activities here probably double or triple that to over three hundred vehicles a day. I don't know. I didn't see that for, for Monitor Road. Let's see how there's some water.
Did you understand what he, did you understand?
Well, yeah, I mean, in a day, if, if, let's just say corn maze, ten AM to nine PM, that's eleven hours. And if you break down, say, five hundred cars over eleven-hour window, that's ninety an hour. And that's one coming in, one going out, same car. So that's forty-five. I don't know. I don't, I don't do traffic counts. But I tried to be reasonable. When I was standing up at the intersection of Merrimack and twenty-nine, I'd sit there and count cars. I'd count cars going out, cars coming in. I just did my own surveys. It's actually more to see how my corn maze is reacting. And the kind of cars we were getting, I think in ten minutes, we had, at that particular part, there was seventy cars. And I did this several times. It was like seventy cars inside of fifty minutes. So I, I did my own math just to see what kind of traffic runs up and down my own, my own main road there, South Merrimack Road. So mine, I don't know. We, we have what we have in our neighborhood. I probably have more UPS trucks and Amazon trucks than anything else. Seriously.
Yes.
And relative to, to, to the music and so forth, you said once in a while you have some outside, but mostly it's just in the barn?
Yeah, it's inside. So the way I built that barn is, is I've insulated everything. The ceilings, the roof system's insulated, the walls are insulated, the floors are insulated, the gables are insulated. Not only insulated, but when I built the walls in the barn, I put a one-inch air gap. That's what you do in Canada. When you want to stop noise, you put a one-inch air gap. And I built two walls that are sixteen feet tall. I insulated both of them. I kept a one-inch gap. You don't get noise. Now, if you have a bedroom and you have a closet and you have a neighboring bedroom, the closet with the clothes in it muffles the noises between them. So that's how that barn's built. When you look at how the barn's built, you just don't get the noise outside. I can, I can rock it inside. Like turn it all the way up and you can stand outside fifty feet away and barely hear it. That's how quiet that barn is. I got R, R thirty in the walls. Nobody has that. It's not even code. It's like off the charts. So it's, I did it on purpose because I knew if we're going to have any kind of activity, and I'll tell you, kids' noise is, this is what I learned. Kids' voice is trans, something about kids yelling and playing outside is noisier than music. And I, I wouldn't have believed that until I came back from Charlottesville the other week and found it out. I was like, oh my gosh, I did not see that guy coming. Just kids run around playing at eight o'clock at night. You'll hear that before you hear the noise from the music. So I don't know.
So, so would you be amenable to a condition that said only music inside the barn?
He said no kids.
No, no, I can't. I'm not going to try and regulate kids. If kids want to run outside on the farm, that's what they need to do.
No, I'm talking about music.
Well, music's not the problem.
Only music inside the barn?
No, I don't think that's reasonable because I've, I've got, I've got neighbors that play music and they're, you know, we all, and it's a difference, right? Like Friday, Saturday night, they'll play music and everyone will hear it. For me, folks go inside. But it doesn't mean you can't have, at times have people go outside and play some music. But do I want it to bother my neighbors or violate the zoning order or the noise ordinance? No. So I don't want to say, no, I don't want any music outside. I have background music outside. If I want to have something to support the corn maze, which I do, I need to be able to, they need to be able to play. Or maybe not even play, just use the amplifier, just to be able to talk to people. We do that too. I have a church group coming in this weekend. It's, well, not a church group. It's a prayer group. And, and they're mainly going to be inside, but I don't want to tell them they can't go outside and do the thing. But I also don't want them to be laying on the horn and waking up neighborhood either. So I, I do, I mean, I have to put my foot down too, you know? Still dead.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
My, my question would just be, could you describe the outdoor movie night and movie projection and where, where that occurs and where it points?
Yeah, we have, we have the broadside of the barn. And I just thought it'd be kind of cool and a nice night, have a, have a projection movie up on that side. It's going to be the side facing my side of the farm. So unfortunately, my neighbors can't see it. If they wanted to, they have to come over. But I have a side that faces me and that's the side that's actually open enough to have that projection. And that was an idea that I'd like to do it just for some of the local kids. But it's, it's not, it's not a, it's not to be, again, it's not to disturb the neighborhood. It's more like if the kids come over from seven to eight-thirty or something. Halloween in DC, I have a house in DC and we shut the street down every year. And the mayor lets us shut it down. And at the end, we get straw bales. We lay it out. Of course, I'm the guy that brings it. And then we put the movie theater, the movie projector down at the end. And all the kids in the neighborhood, all over DC, come to this one street, my street, and they watch these movies. So that's where the idea came from because kids love that stuff. It's not for money. It's not like I'm charging fees. I don't care about that. But if I did that, that's exactly what it would be. And that's the model from it, actually. That's where I got the idea. I didn't get that idea myself.
All right. My, my last question would be, you mentioned that you were concerned about, you really didn't want to upgrade the streets at both ends. And that's...
No, no, I'm okay with that.
You are okay with it?
Yeah, the VDOT comments were great. It was honestly something I was going to do anyways. I haven't got around to it.
Okay.
The, well, actually, I didn't have the, the permission to do it on the one side on Store Road. That, that I, I didn't have permission. So now if you give me that, I can do it. Thank you. But I don't want to make it asphalt all the way because I don't want to increase the speed. It's important to keep speed down. Gravel road helps kind of tamper that. But when you're entering the thoroughfare, especially on Monitor, because you get good sight distance. The thing is, is that we got great sight distance. It's just at any time, you know, you don't know. Somebody could be coming pretty quick. And we have some dirt bike kids that like to run those roads too. So if you're in there and you're trying to take off and your tires are spinning, kicking gravel, and you don't get out quick enough or you're able to stop, that can be a problem, right? So that's VDOT's comment. That's perfectly acceptable. But paving the whole, the whole subdivision or doing like that, that's not really. The most I'd ever do is do some tar and chip. And that's mainly to keep the gravel out from my wife's tires. So...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So let's say this does get approved. Lay me out what a year looks like.
A good year.
A good year? Well, John, what's a good year look like if we had one?
Which, I think she said, you know, you, what you're planning, what you're planning for.
Well, I think it's all, I mean, I'm kind of following the calendar, right? So birthdays are all the time. Everyone's got a birthday. It falls on a day, three hundred and sixty-five days. So people want to come out and have a birthday party, let it rip. Our growing season is our greatest obstacle. I had to turn down three weddings in October because I had the corn maze going on. You can't have both. There are some things you can do both, but I couldn't do both better. So I have to make choices. So a typical year is going to start with not a whole lot in January, February. That's sort of when the bird program's going to kick in. We're also packaging up bird seed, making our own bird seeds so I can sell. So I'm going to use those off months for that. And then we get into April, May. John's planning. That's typically a time people want to get married. So you might see four to eight weddings in that time period. Then nobody wants to get married because it's too hot in June, July. That's fine. We, we get into August. The cornfields are growing. They're still growing for the maze. September, we had a wedding, I think it was October fourth. That was in conflict. That really, I actually couldn't run the maze that day. So, and they snuck in. They were supposed to do September, then they changed it to October. So that kind of messed me up. So I had to actually delay my opening a week. So I won't make that mistake again. And then we harvest. Hopefully, we got the soybeans down about two weeks ago. And then we're going to go after corn. I got a dog walking group that wants to use it right after we close it to the public. They want to come in. It's a therapy group. So they're going to run through the maze. And then as soon as that's done, hopefully John will get in there and harvest the corn. And then we'll start working on using that for making some of the foundation for our bird feed. That's it.
Okay.
But your proposal here, you're talking about a parade of lights and all this other stuff with Easter egg hunts. You have a parade of lights, Christmas celebration lights around the barn and the back out to Store Road.
If we can do it, I...
You got an Easter egg hunt. You got the movies, retreats, these prayer breakfasts, the haystacks, the wine run around the corn. And then your trunk and treat, truck or treat.
Yep, it's all in there. Half those things we did and the other half, I don't know. I don't know if I'm going to get, I don't know if my wife's going to let me do the parade of lights this year. I would like to do it starting at December sixth, but I don't know. We'll see. I don't know if I'll be able to do it.
Don't, don't think we have one in Concord.
So I got this loop. It's really cool. And it stays close to the barn. It just comes in Store Road, loops around. And so I had this idea of making this a little light loop and then come in, people want to do something at the barn, they can. That's where we're going to do movie theaters. I wanted to, I wanted to create the streets of Jerusalem, but, you know, I still have a full-time job. So it's kind of hard for me to run it. But yeah, if I could do that next year, if I could do it this year, I would. I just don't think I have the energy. The corn maze took a little bit of me out of me. And we're still going to go do it this weekend. I extended the season an extra week so I can catch the, the group that wants to bring their service dogs in. And the prayer group, they want to use it Saturday. So I figured, you know, just keep it open one more shot. And John didn't mind holding off on harvesting another week. His comment was if it helps dry the corn, the better. So I'm like, okay, cool. I'm good with that.
Okay. Any other questions?
So if you were to do this light thing, I guess what kind of hours of operations? Obviously, there's going to be lights. So that's going to potentially cause issue with neighbors. And I'm assuming that you would probably try and make it like the one that's done down in Dazle where there's music as well.
Who, where?
Dazle.
Yeah, just...
Atlin? I heard there's one in Madison. Some, some family opens up a place.
But you know, when you drive through and they have music playing or something like that?
Yeah, I didn't think about music.
Christmas music.
Yeah, I didn't really think about music. I thought more like you just kind of come on through and wind up at the barn and hang out and house. I mean, what do you do in December? It's cold. Go in a barn and hang out and find an activity. I have activities I, I like to do. I just, I can't, like I told Neil, I can't think of everything I want to do.
Sure.
You know, it's, I like to have the flexibility that if, if on a Saturday morning, I want to set up a workshop like Home Depot does for the kids and just have them come in and build a bunch of birdhouses. And then they can sign it and put it, and we can go find a tree to hang it on. I like to do that. But I can't possibly just write out a business plan for this. Most of this is nonprofit anyway. It just comes at a loss. And that's fine. I mean, money isn't everything, but you know, it'd be nice to sustain this, right? I don't want to go into, I'm sixty years old. I don't want to go into retirement with the negative sixty grand I spend a year on maintenance on the farm and stuff. I'd like to have something to help offset a little bit. So I can just kind of enjoy myself and have folks continue to enjoy themselves. They've been doing so, they've been doing it so far. That's about it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
So your traffic, I know you said with the larger events, you're going to have one way in, one way out. What does that plan look like? Like how does somebody that goes to an event there know that it's one way in, one way out?
Well, we have signs.
They do have signs?
Yeah, I have signs. But the thing is, is like, I gotta, I gotta see, you know? I thought I was going to have a lot of people one day at the corn maze and we didn't have anybody. And then the day, it was the worst day. We had like a hundred people come in, like boom. And it was, so I have to just take it as it comes. If I, if I get bum rushed at the goalpost, I have options, you know? And that's why opening up the second entrance could help it. I got friends that live on Store Road. I'm not really in the mood to be sending them through there, raising hell. I'd just rather open up the other gate, let them pass on through. And that's why, since I have it, I didn't have it four years ago, I got lucky to be able to find that property. And it came available at the wrong time, but I made it work.
So the, so if you were to have a larger wedding with what you say up to however many guests you had in here, six hundred and fifty participants?
A wedding?
That's what you have a, you have up to forty-five events that could average six hundred and fifty participants. That was written in here. You have eighty events annually for two hundred and ninety-six indoor participants, forty-five events that would average six hundred and fifty. Yeah, so if, just in theory, if you...
Humanteenth. Oh, you mean like the worst thing happened?
Yeah, like, so if you accepted a large wedding party, you had a large wedding party, how do you go about getting people in, getting people out, and everyone knowing where to go? Without just your signs, like?
No.
Okay, well, numbers aside, the larger events, how do you go about getting traffic into your facility, parking them, and then from the parking lot out the back door?
So, okay, I think the six fifty, I think I remember this, right? Because we did this a while ago. The six hundred and fifty number was a guesstimate as to what we thought the maximum could be.
Right. I, again, I don't care.
And it was driven honestly around the corn maze. That was the only thing I could think. That could drive out those kind of numbers. And if we had it, it would happen over an eleven-hour period. And if it happened over an eleven-hour period, it would be, what's six fifty divided by eleven?
Again, I'm...
Fifty-five, 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 fifty-five cars an hour? So if you're coming in, let's just say one comes in and they spend an hour and a half and they go out, I guess we're talking roughly seventy-five cars in any particular point of that day coming in or out. And if it was being obnoxious, then I can simply open up the other gate. And we have signs. So we can shut it down and say, one way in and one way out. So we, we have that. That's, that's the backup.
That's all you have. You don't have people directing traffic. You don't have...
Not for that, no. If, if I had, I guess... Not for that, no. If, if I had, I guess if I had, if I needed to hire a, a flagging crew, I guess I can do that, but for that kind of numbers...
That's, that's kind of my point, what I'm getting at, is if, if you have a large event, what is, what is your protocol as far as handling that?
If I got up to probably fifteen hundred to two thousand in a day, I think that you're right. I think you'd have to have, you'd have to have some sort of people directing at that point.
Right.
But for these numbers, fifty or sixty in an hour?
No, and that's what I'm saying. That's, I'm just focusing on, on the larger events that you want to have, whether it be a wedding, or whatever it may be.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a wedding. It would only be the corn maze, or perhaps Easter, like, like an event that can attract a large number of people on a maximum scale? Yeah, I think you're right. And, and I think you're looking at fifty to sixty in an hour. And when you multiply by eleven, you get to your six hundred and fifty. That was the only way I can do it.
Yeah.
Did I do it right?
All right, I think we have one more question?
Or two.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. I guess back to the traffic. Store Road has a hundred and sixty vehicles per day on that road, based on what it was designed for. Now, that is up to where it ends being paved, and then it goes to gravel, correct, that goes onto your site. VDOT commented that you have to have a VDOT commercial entrance, which should be a paved entrance. Typically, it's thirty-foot wide, radiuses and things like that. So you're going to pave your entrance into your site, based on the VDOT comments. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. There's no, there's no curve. It's a straight shot, so it's just going to be width.
It's usually the ninety-degree turn, where people are coming around the radius to turn into it, right?
We don't have that. It's literally just a straight shot. So, it'll be nineteen feet wide, roughly, eighteen, nineteen, I think that's what Store Road is. And they just paved it, actually. Was that the first time they paved Store Road? Or was it tar and chip last year, but was it, they've never paved it before, right?
They paved before they tar and chiped it.
When it was originally built. Okay. What did I do?
Only talk to us.
Oh, I had to ask some neighbor, because going back...
We'll get him back up if, if we need to. We'll get him back up if he needs to.
I know Raymond had a question, too.
That's good.
So I, I guess where I was going with it was that, you know, typical commercial entrance is paved entrance. So you'd have to comply with whatever VDOT asked you to do there.
I have no problem with it.
And then, the other item would be, is if you, if you're going to have, you don't know how many people you're really going to have, it's a guess, right? You're guessing the six fifty, per se, based on whatever event. Then, I guess my concern would be, is the amount of traffic that would be on that road. If, if it's an increase of what it is today, on the existing road, on the gravel section of it, are you willing to replace the gravel and, and do repairs on that gravel to make it a safe area for traffic to get in and out from the paved road to your site?
That's my plan. Yeah, that's, that's baked into this. That's VDOT's comments. That's VDOT, isn't, isn't that VDOT's comments?
Not necessarily. I'm, I'm talking about like a...
The whole road? Are you asking if we're going to pave the whole?
No, I'm talking about an impact analysis. What I'm saying is, is that if you impact, if you're going to increase the amount of traffic on that road, and you damage that road, then are you, would you be willing to be responsible for that impact that you're going to cause?
Are you talking about the paved portion of Store Road, and also South Merrimack Road, and like those areas?
No, the gravel section that comes into your site.
Well, I built that. That's my money. And, 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 I didn't ask anybody for anything. I, I, I always maintain it. I maintain all that. I built it, I mean, I've, I've built it twenty-five years ago. Yeah, I built Store Road, all that, from, from that maintenance sign all the way in, that's five hundred feet. I didn't ask anybody for any money.
Right.
I built it, and we maintain it.
So you'd be willing to continue to maintain it for whatever amount of traffic that you have there going there?
It's my farm. Yeah, it's where I live.
That's all I was asking. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Edwards, I applaud you for your creativity with your property, all the different things you want to do.
I don't know if that's good or not.
No, no, I think, I think being able to be creative with our property is a, a good thing to do. And your, the current zoning right now is ag, and you have quite a bit of latitude with that already. I understand you can do the corn maze, and pick your own crops, and there's other things that you're allowed to do already. So the, the request is for a conditional use permit to do more than the original zoning allows. Correct?
I, as I understand it, if, if I do something that's deemed in the eyes of the county that can create a substantial impact on the community, then, then that's, that's not specific, that's gray, and I'm, I'm at, you know, anybody can make a complaint, or whatever, and that man has to deal with it, and then he has to call me, and then I have to deal with it, and I don't want to deal with it. That's why I'm here.
I also commend you for the way, the way you built your barn, and the little things you're doing to try to mitigate the, the negative impacts on the community. I think that's, that's admirable, and that's what we should do as neighbors. But I'm being asked, I guess, to allow a conditional use permit. And the conditional use permit, I, I have to make a decision as, when I vote here, if it affects adversely the health or safety of the residents in any shape or form, if it's detrimental to the public welfare, if it's injurious to pub, the property or improvement in the neighborhood, or in conflict with the comp plan. I don't think it's in conflict necessarily with the comp plan. The other three may have some impact. And when I read your application, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but I added up all the events you could do with the application, the way you presented it. It would be two hundred and ninety-seven events a year, if you did them all. Obviously, I don't know if you're going to do them all, but if you did them all, and that's without the wine tasting. So that's two hundred and ninety-seven days out of the year that property could be used for something. And per your current application, and it's anywhere from seven hundred, six hundred participants to twelve hundred participants, sometimes less, maybe sometimes more, depending on the success. With that, I mean, does that adversely affect, and how many events are you doing right now a year? How many did you do this year?
I mean, just in the last forty-five days, we've been active for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then, for the last six weeks, and then before that, we were just doing agricultural things. And then before that, we had a wedding, I think we had a wedding in April.
So you've done probably twenty-five events this year, thirty events?
I mean, probably, yeah, probably twenty-five, thirty event cycles.
Okay.
Days or whatever.
Okay. So it's a potential of increasing with this current application, up to two hundred and ninety-seven?
Yeah, that, I mean, I don't, I, I, I don't think I'd get there, but if you ask you about the, all the overlaps and the potentials, like if you count Saturday as two, because you have a prayer breakfast, and you got a corn maze, and there's two, they're overlapping, you, you know, you, you could have, I don't know, I, I tried to get a handle on how many kids are going to come for the prayer breakfast. I couldn't really get exactly what we're at, but we're somewhere between fifteen and thirty, we don't know, and who knows? Maybe four will show up, or maybe three hundred will show up. I guess I got to go figure that out.
With all the excitement you're generating, it could be three hundred. But, so I look at the things, the potential adverse effects are music, the noise, obviously. And if you're going from twenty-five to thirty events to two hundred and ninety-seven events, that's pretty much almost an everyday potential of there being noise. And then traffic, it will be a significant increase in traffic, not just on a twenty-five or thirty day, but maybe two hundred and ninety days of increased traffic. Lighting on those number of days, wear and tear on the roads, it was said that there was a hundred and sixty cars per day is what the road is approved for. It sounds like that would be increased quite a bit. So those are the things I have to take into consideration. And how will that affect property values for the neighborhood? I mean, if you have that kind of an activity going on, I'm a real estate agent, I take people in, and there's a racetrack nearby. They go, oh, I don't want to be anywhere close to that type of a venue. So, those are the things I have to take into consideration, and it's not always easy to do that. And to think about all the other neighbors in the neighborhood, how it would affect them. So I'm working that through, and I really appreciate your presentation here. And I appreciate your zeal and your excitement for what you want to do. I support you in that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. I think we have one more question.
Just one last one. So, so we talked about this, using it as a, DuCard, using it as a tasting room, if you will. So how do you deconflict DuCard using it as a tasting room with the weddings that are going to be held there, or, or any? How do you, I assume that DuCard is inside the barn?
Well, inside and outside. We've been both. And, and it's really just hand in hand. They don't have their own events, and I have my own events. We, we do joint events, so we do things together. We don't do everything together. Not everything I do, they're there. It's just, it's, it, it's, it's good, it works for both of us. It, it's, but it's not, and it, it doesn't have to be, I mean, tasting room, it's, it's not really, I don't even call it tasting room. It's more of a, I mean, I don't know how you call it, we just, like another, I don't know, we just, we don't do each other's space, so we work well together. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So it's, it's like, they support my functions, not all of them, but when they're there, it's pretty low-key. I mean, we're just...
Okay. So DuCard's not advertising that they have a second tasting room at your facility that's open every day of the week?
No, no, we're not doing that. We're not doing that. I, I, I'm hoping that we can just keep this, like, Friday, Saturday, Sunday stuff. Because I, even when I stop working as much as I am up north, I'm, I'm trying to retire, guys. So I'm not trying to ramp it up. This isn't like I need the money, money through Thursdays and that stuff. So, it's, but if kids want to come and bring a school bus out on Tuesday and do some walking on the farm, I'm not going to say no, if I can accommodate them. And sometimes that happens. That, that actually, we've been getting more and more calls, and so I'm not going to tell them no. And that would be an event. And it might be eighteen people.
All right.
Well, out of curiosity, Neil, maybe you can answer this. Bringing a school bus out to visit the farm, is that under, acceptable under agritourism?
I would think so, yes, sir.
Okay. So those things already exist for you to do?
That would be a, that would be a principle for me to do.
All right. Think we, you've done very well in presenting it and answering the questions that we have before you. And that's all we, that's all we needed. Wish you the best of luck.
Not on one, but thank you, guys.
We'll open up the public hearing, and then we'll move from there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edwards. At this time, now to open the public hearing. If there's anyone here who would like to comment on this application, just raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, and come forth and give your full name for the record. Yes?
Corey Clinton, in the Steamsburg District. And, you know, I, I sit here, listen to this, and I find it very, very refreshing to see an application come before us that is truly a agritourism. It's, you know, it's really bringing the community together, a cohesiveness of, of, you know, agricultural with his maize, the birds, and, and bringing, you know, hosting weddings and different events. It's, it's truly the definition and vision of what Culpeper County should be. This is the things we should be out there one hundred percent supporting. I would hope it would be a unanimous support here. You know, in light of what the journey we've had over the last several years of all the, you know, data centers and solar, and all the industrial applications that have been flooding through, it's very, very refreshing to see some of these, this is not the, the first in the last few months, but I would hope that you guys would take light of it and do whatever you can to help and support this journey for this gentleman. I mean, obviously, you can hear what he's communicating. He's not trying to make some outrageous, you know, big event. He's trying to work with his farm and integrate agritourism, you know? And some of the things, you know, lights, for example. How many people drive around the county? You see Christmas lights on people's houses out in the driveway, you see floaty things. I mean, those are things that I don't think that are, should be regulated. I should feel like I should be able to put lights on my, at my house. You know, and obviously, he's, he's, you can see the intent of taking consideration of the neighbors. Example, how he built his barn. How many folks have parties outside? Sure, there's going to be noise, but I don't think, in, you know, based upon the, the, the nature of what he's presented, there's any ways it's going to be a detriment in, in safety, harm, or anything to the county. So I would just hope that you guys would, you know, see this as a refreshing application, and do whatever you can to support it one hundred percent.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? Yes. Give your full name for the record, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Excuse me. John Bennett, Under-Assistant, Temporary Governmental Attorney.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen. I just have a few technical comments that, after hearing everything, that I don't know if there's a clear picture of exactly where things are right now. And I don't know that a clear picture has been articulated where things might go, except something probably beyond what most people would imagine is reasonable in its circumstances. So I, I think it would behoove everyone, the, both Culpeper County and the property owner, if things were set forth in detail, so everyone knows where things are. And here, just a few points that I was thinking about that, that aren't necessarily addressed right now by the conditions, but I think probably should be addressed if you're going to move forward. First of all, to define the present operations, which, let's just call those light intensity uses, the day-to-day things, that goes up to how many people, how many cars, and what hours does that have? And then, on the music question, seems like there's two components. Inside the structure, and then outside the structure. Inside could be one set of hours, of course, and outside could be another set of hours, because that has the potential of having more impact on the neighborhood. The, there's no specifications, well, there, there are specifications, but are the specifications for the hours reasonable? And the hours go back to, to the timing of the music also, that, that should be defined so everybody knows where they are on that. So then, there could be a next, next class of events, and we'll just call them non-minor. I'm just making up names here. But that could be between a certain number of people, I don't know, let's say a hundred, up to two fifty or something. I'm just picking the numbers here. And there could be separate conditions for those type of events to mitigate the impacts. I haven't listed them all out here. But then the third category, and probably the one that merits the most consideration and the most specificity, would be, I'll just call it major events. And that might be something over two fifty or so. I'm told by Neil, and that a large wedding wouldn't exceed three hundred people, typically. I've never been to one that large, but maybe that's, that's, that's what Neil and I were speaking, speaking of. So, for the major events, you know, a thousand people is just, could be viewed as too much for the neighborhood and infrastructure to get to it. This is a rural area, it's not commercial. And so, some of these activities are, no doubt, agriculture-related, but then some are. So, it's important to, to have an overall picture of, of what goes when. There was, this was spoken of, but I, I think things that are told you should be in writing, if, if they're important. And that was maintaining gravel roadway to the entrance in at least the condition equal to its present condition, or better. If you put that in, then there's no misunderstanding about that.
Okay.
And then the, I'll just mention this, the outdoor entertainment events. You can define the limit on those. But if it's not defined by you, under the ordinance, you can make it lower. If it's not defined by you, the limit is four hundred and ninety-nine people, which, and there is no limit on the number of those, but by practice, those permits are issued by the county administrator. And typically, he won't give out to a single property owner more than three a year. So, just some things to think about. You know, carrying it over and working on the specifics might do everyone a lot of good.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, I think we've, oh, excuse me, anyone else who would like to speak? Declare the public hearing closed. Think we've heard, um, a lot of, we've heard both sides and I think we've covered a lot with this particular application and the applicant has done a good job also with, um, supporting or his request and, and answering our questions that we have. In my two acres I have, I think I could have movies next door and, I mean, not next door, but I'd have movies and music and I've had some parties over there that I'm surprised Neil didn't come to, but they were for my, for my grandkids. You know, for graduation, birthday, you know, things like that. So, you know, there's something that you have to do to respect your neighbors, you know, how you do it. From what I've heard and, and all, a lot of efforts have been made to, to make sure that not only we can introduce this tourism into the agriculture in a, in a meaningful way, especially when you're starting with the kids and, and doing that. We, um, this, um, the, the owners actually live there and I think they are gonna be the ones working, you know, most of the time on it and making an effort to make sure that their neighbors are satisfied. So, um, and that their privacy and all is not disturbed. But as far as the application we have here, commissioners, if there's no other discussion, the chair entertain a motion?
Oh, wait a minute, let's discuss some, let's talk about-
That's what I say, if there's no other discussion, then, but if anyone have any comments, um, we make them at this time, then alright.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, actually for staff. So Neil, the reason for the CUP application was to fix a code violation because the barn, isn't a barn, it's a banquet facility, so it can't be exempt from, from the building code. So that's the reason that we're here.
That's, that's one of the main-
Okay, so if the, if the CUP, if the CUP application is denied, then what is the applicant's alternative for resolving the zoning, the zoning violation?
Well, there's not a zoning violation, there's a building violation from the building official. You know, he does have a permit for an ag use structure out there. He would just have to satisfy or reconcile his use in terms of a banquet facility primarily to a barn primarily with, you know, agritourism occurring in it. And, you know, he shared with, with staff that that's not the goal here. I don't know if that answers the question.
Well, the goal then is to increase his operations here?
The goal is to just, to, to make it so that that's a safe structure for assembly use. And that's a building term of art, not, not a zoning term of art.
Okay.
And I think what he was doing this too, since he had to go through that process to, to comply with the building department, then while you're doing it, then, you know, you, um, take advantage of the growth, okay? That you, that you're planning to have. So I think that's the whole purpose, so you won't have to be coming back again. So since he has to be here anyway, I, I think I heard him say that several times too.
Yeah, well, I, I will just say that obviously the applicant has been successful so far with managing the, the events that he's got. But in terms of planning for, for expanding the operations there and doing more and more events, I don't know that the, the plan that was presented was particularly well thought through.
Okay, alright, anyone else?
Do you have anything? Cause I'm gonna jump in front of you. Do you have, Mr. Williams?
I mean, I guess my, my concern was the road and I think we talked about the, the maintenance of the road. I think if the, if the application does go forward or wherever it goes, when it goes to board supervisor, I think that should be a condition of approval, that that road that's gravel would be maintained in its existing condition as it is today to maintain a safe access to the property.
Yeah.
The second thing I would say is I would, I do, I am still a little confused as far as how many events you have today and how many events you have in the future. I'd kinda tend to agree with Mr. Bennett and Keith a little bit in terms of making sure the details are understood. I'm not quite clear on how many events you're gonna have, how much traffic is really gonna be generated, you know, for those events. But that's just my view on it.
Okay, I think, go ahead.
So my comments are, you know, we sit here in our community and we have a comprehensive plan that says that we should support agriculture. Agriculture's a broad name. We can define this as a form of agriculture. The building department did not. I don't understand why they didn't think that this was still a, a barn and agricultural use. If he stopped the process today, then I'm sure he could park tractors and equipment in the barn. So all of a sudden, we now have, we're forced into a situation where the barn is now a banquet facility. And we are here to promote agriculture and we, we seem to be in conflict here because this piece of agriculture is around neighborhoods. Most of Culpeper County is growing just like this, where the subdivisions are surrounding these farms. So who's there first and who's gonna outlast who, we all have to get together and work together. And this particular applicant seems like he does want to work together. His reputation with his neighbors is very important. He doesn't seem like he's going to abuse what he's got going on there, because then it would impact his reputation. I don't think it's a problem for me, other than the noise. And if you put in there, and it's already stated in this application, that it would be per the noise ordinance and it cited what the noise ordinance definition is, that's 10 o'clock at night. So why do we have to get down in the weeds and start talking about 7:00 AM to 11:50? And who, no. Just the noise ordinance prevails, that's what it is. Who is gonna count? If there's 499 people coming to this event, or 300, or 200, who's counting this? How can we enforce that? We can't. I mean, you're asking someone to go into a agreement. I wouldn't agree to it. You start telling me this, that and the other with how many? Who's enforcing the how many? We can't even enforce some of the things we have today. So I don't have any problem with it, other than if you said any outdoor noise has to be per the noise ordinance. What he does in the barn, who cares? I, I don't care how loud or what, we're not gonna be able to monitor it anyway. If we have complaints, then I think that that is called to action by either the zoning office or some other policing entity. So I don't have a problem with this. I think that it is the new agriculture. We are not going to always be able to fit in the mold of plant corn, plant beans, you know, make the pesticides, make the fertilizer, make the dust. We, we are not, and they're not asking to do that. So I'm okay with it. That's my rant, sorry.
Ray?
Again, I, I applaud the, the purpose or the goal of this activity. Agritourism is, is a great thing. I think it's good for the county, I think it's good for the, the citizens. My concerns, again, were in the areas of, I, I think the application is, what jumps out at me right away is that this large number of activities, so much larger than you are today. And I, I think your guidance maybe was to tell us everything you could possibly use this for. And I think that's a little overwhelming on our side of the fence. If you go forward to the board of supervisors, I, I would almost recommend that you kind of restrict this a little bit as to exactly what you want to use, because I think we had a gentleman comment here that, you know, it's, it's not very well encapsulated, if you will. So, so I would, that's one of the things I would recommend to you anyway. I personally think, you talked about 10 o'clock at night, I don't think 7 o'clock in the morning is the right time to, to, to open this stuff up. So I, I would at least wanna change that condition to something more reasonable. I don't know if that's 10 o'clock or 9 o'clock or whatever, but I don't think it's 7 o'clock. Let's see. I guess that's it, thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't wanna be confused as I get ready to be asked to vote here. What are we voting on? Well, what are we, I mean, what, he already can do agritourism, correct?
He's not complying, he's not-
But he, he has the right to do agritourism. Right now, the only question is can he do it in his barn? Or can he use the barn? But otherwise, he has the right to agritourism on, on the property by right, correct?
For, for some of the activities, yes, sir.
So which activity?
The hosting, the hosting of the DuCard winery and things like that, that in my mind would need to be in a banquet facility and not in a barn, because he's not producing the wine. You know, again, the amplified music, you know, the, the late night hours, those are my main concerns.
Okay, but he can do everything else for most part.
Everything's a broad word, as we've been saying.
Well, I mean, everything else in his application for most part would-
Agritourism, I can read you, you know, the definition of agritourism, if you'll bear with me, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Yeah, agritourism, any activity carried out on a farm or ranch that allows members of the general public for recreational, entertainment or educational purposes to view or enjoy rural activities, including farming, wineries, ranching, historical, cultural, harvest your own activities, natural activities and attractions. An activity is an agritourism activity whether or not the participant is pay, is, is paying to participate. So it's a pretty broad definition, that's, that's a principal permitted use or by right use there. What we're looking at is perhaps put some conditions that would mitigate any impacts for the things we've mentioned. The lights, the noise, you know, the, the, the number of people.
Okay, alright. Did I answer it, sir?
It did, thank you.
Alright then.
I like my fellow commissioners' recommendations to, one, not limited by time, but focus on allowing the noise ordinance to do its job, let the lighting ordinance do its job. The number of events and participants at each event concerns me in my rural country outlook that we still have. But I find it really hard to pick, I hate to pick arbitrary number that limits his business model and goal, just in a poor way, that maybe we don't understand his business as well as he does. So I, I'll just say that the number of activities or participants, do we limit that? I'm still up in the air, or whether it's even appropriate to do that.
So Neil, going off of Mr. Price's question, so, you know, the issue right now is the, the building permit or whatever. Okay, so let's say we approve this, does that issue still exist?
It will remedy the situation. It'll allow him to get a zoning permit and then he can come into compliance with the building department, so.
So in theory, if we approve this, this is just a way of him getting around, doing the things that he needs to do?
No, 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 it would allow him a, a, a venue or it would allow him to get the permit as he intends to do so from the building department to make this barn up to code.
Okay.
If you approve it, he, he can bring it up to code as a banquet facility.
Or the winery.
Banquet, for the winery.
If we deny it-
If you deny it, it has to stay a barn or he's back to some kind of drawing board.
Okay.
Alright, so my concerns obviously are traffic, as someone that drives that road every day, looking at the potential, and I'm gonna call it grayness, because it sounds like, you know, creativity just exploded and anything that we could think of stuck and we have no idea actually what we're gonna do, you know? And especially right there, like I will use, when the rodeo is going on, for example, you cannot get out of South Merrimack onto 29. If he has an event going on at the same time, the traffic will be a thousand times worse. So traffic is a concern for me, like I said, as someone that drives that road on a daily basis. In terms of wanting to do agritourism stuff, I mean, I'm all about agritourism, but I do think that, that the traffic does show huge potential for issues with not knowing, you know, are we gonna have a thousand people, are we gonna have 200 people, is it gonna be a thousand people every weekend? It just, to me, there's not enough there to mitigate the huge potential issues with, with traffic alone.
Okay, alright, anyone else?
I wanna make a comment about the traffic thing. You know, I think VDOT in Route 29 is not limited access there, is it? So we have the country store dumping lots of cars on there, the Ford, the dealerships are there. So a lot of things dump onto 29, but I know that the, uh, the rodeo, the one-time event, I don't see that as big. I, I see these events not as big as the rodeo, but Route 29 is substantial and, you know, it, it may be up to VDOT to control them if they start putting too much pressure on that intersection.
Right, I'm just saying, like I said, someone that, I mean, I literally sat for 45 minutes.
Right, the rodeo's a big example of, of something horrible.
Carnival.
Yeah, the carnival stuff, but, you know, those are, I don't think the same kind of events as he will have, where they're all at once leaving the facility, cause they did all at once leave then.
Wow, I'm just-
Rodeo's over and all those cars came out.
No, no, but even getting in as traffic was trickling in, that's just, traffic there is an issue. And there's the way it is. I mean, there's nothing preventing putting up tents and having a, a event of a thousand people.
Well, I don't see it as a Woodstock, but, you know, I think that, um-
Okay, alright, and, go ahead.
So right now, he cannot use the building for weddings, wine tasting?
I've not written any violation letters from a driving standpoint, I'll just share that.
I guess I'm still a little confused.
And the building department wants him up to code on a banquet hall, you know, you-
In order to do what?
Fire, weddings, fire, egress, ingress, so it's all fire code too, versus a barn with no permit.
But in order to have a wedding there, then he needs to bring it up in order to-
To build, building code.
The building code, so he can't have weddings there in theory. And that's why he's here, cause he wants to be able to do it legally without-
Yeah.
I guess I'm still a little confused and I, excuse me for that.
I think that, Mr. Chairman, if you will, I think the disconnect is partially around, if you have a barn in the county and you have hay in it, you can take the hay out of that barn and have a wedding and it, and then put the hay back and it's still a barn, you know, with cattle. This is not happening in that structure.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're, we're just trying to remedy a situation to make it safe for the public and the applicant's, you know, cooperating and participating with the building official.
Okay, that makes a little more sense, thank you for that. What is the minimum that needs to be done then, in order for that to happen?
That, that I can't speak to. That, that's between him and the building official.
In the building department, yeah.
It would be about egress and safety.
So this has precipitated a request for a lot more, ability to do a lot more on the property than he would have otherwise because of the building issue. But if we went back and just got the building approved somehow, he'd be able to do everything he's been doing. From the way, um-
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think from, he, he, he wants to continue to have weddings and all there and be, be a wedding venue and also from a standpoint of food and, and all, you know, that you, you read in the packet where it says that the health department, you know, he needs to get permits, you know, to make sure that that's done. And, and what Neil was saying is that if it was just gonna continue to be a barn, then he wouldn't have to go through, but to make it a, a venue, a wedding venue and especially to use it that a way on a regular basis, then there are other requirements you're gonna have to meet from a building code standpoint. And that's what he's trying to do, is bring it up to that level, so he can consistently use it as a, a, a venue for a wedding and-
Do those other requirements require a change of permit? Can't he just make those changes and then meet the need for the building inspector?
Mr. Chairman, if I could as well, you know, the, the, the off-site winery is an issue as well and that's in suggested condition number six. And that wouldn't be allowed in just a barn. So banquet facility will also allow DuCard vineyards to come in there, which, you know, staff has no objection to.
And eventually he's gonna have his own grapes and all, right? The winery's gonna be, oh, that's, I think that was what they-
I don't wanna be a winery, but I do have plans, there's, DuCard's out of the roof, they're down to the last acre for grapes, so we have plans- they're down to the last acre for grapes, so we have plans for maybe 10, 12 years out, so I have blocks scheduled for that.
All right. Okay. Is that better, sir? Yeah. Because you're thinking that if he doesn't, if it's not approved, that he can still continue to do what he's doing, basically use it as a...
Well, he can do what he's doing, with the exception that the building needs to be brought up to a certain level.
Right, right.
Why can't he just bring it up to a certain level and then do what he wants to do?
Because I've gotta write a zoning permit for that.
Okay, so that's...
And all building permits require zoning permit.
Okay, so we have to give him a zoning permit in order for him to bring the building up?
Correct, it's either a barn where he's exempt from the building code, or a banquet facility.
So, that's what's triggered it.
Do what he's asking for.
So, then, is there a minimum that he could ask for here in that respect, so we could just give him that zoning for just that purpose, and not everything else added in, or?
That's supposition that I can't...
Okay, that's, okay.
But I'm sure you could look at it that a way, you know, too.
Thank you for bearing with me, I just wanted to make sure I understand.
Okay. Any, are these guys? Okay. All right. Being done, the chair entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion and see if we can get it to carry.
Go ahead.
All right, case and request, case number and request U-2256-25-1, conditional use permit for agritourism in banquet facility by the Robert and Rosemary Edwards. I move to approve it and send it to the supervisors for their opinion. I do believe that we should strike the hours and make it per the noise ordinance, and I do like the suggested recommendations from the staffs stating that the venue entrances at storied monitored roads shall be upgraded to meet VDOT standards for moderate volume commercial entrance, that the noise decibel levels, I don't, I think that the noise ordinance should take over, because no one's gonna go measure that. Any temporary portage on facilities have to be in accordance with the Virginia Department of Health and provided by licensed carriers and sewage handlers. Food services shall be permitted through the VDOT Department, through the Virginia Department of Health. The site lighting shall be in conformance with Appendix A, Article 32, outdoor lighting standards. The barn is permitted, banquet facility shall be allowed to host a licensed Virginia Farm Winery off-site tasting room in accordance with the Virginia ABC regulations. Any intermittent stream pond or wetland on the property shall provide a non-disturbed vegetative buffer of 35 feet as measured from the top of the stream to the bank or edge of the water. That's total of my motion.
Okay.
I move to amend the motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Do we have a second? Let's have a second first, and we'll have a discussion. Now, do we have a second?
It does.
Second.
Okay. Okay, probably moving second now. Any discussion?
I would just, based on Mr. Kilby's recommendation, I'd add an eighth condition, maintain the gravel road in its current condition.
I would agree to that.
I don't know if that's as detailed as Mr. Kilby recommended.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I'd like to amend, rather than the opening hours of 7:00 a.m., I would like to make that 10:00 a.m.
I'll 9:00.
I'm okay with 9:00.
Okay, I'm okay with 9:00. I amend the motion to the 9:00 o'clock opening, and then also per noise ordinance for closing.
Okay. Those two amendments have been heard, so it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Being done, we ask Morgan for the roll call.
All right.
Make Mr. Bennett happy?
Mr. Egborne. Ms. Reins. Mr. Burton. Mr. Zegley. Mr. Reeves. Ms. Thornhill.
Aye.
Mr. Kilby. Mr. Price. Mr. Wilks.
Nay.
Yes. Okay. All right.
5 to 4, and it has passed.
Okay. We will, we will send it forward to the board with the recommendation of approval. Okay? All right.
I have one more comment, if I could, about the part, the banquet facilities, et cetera, and the agritourism. As we go forward, because we, I've already approved a Van Hoven project out at Greens Corne, what's it, Greens Corner and the intersection of Stevensburg Road, and that is going to be, we did not go through too much detail, we just, like, then, the other week, we went through the rodeo deal, and that was not an agritourism as much as a cultural event thing. So, I think that we need to just think through some of this going forward, maybe we have some kind of a conversation in a work session about it. Thank you.
All right.
Good idea.
Okay. That completes our meeting for this evening. The chair at this time entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Do we have a second? All in favor, aye? This meeting is now adjourned. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you.